Call this meeting in the Westland City Council order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council President Protem Michael Londo.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Present.
Protem Londo.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Present.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampie.
Present.
President Hurd.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. First note on the agenda, item G under consent calendar, Article 2. There is, the word says complaint, it should say compliant. So that is striked as corrected here. It says complaint, it should say compliant. So that's consent calendar, item G, Article 2. Then we'll go into special presentations and announcements. We'll begin with Len Fisher from Inspire Theater.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wild, Councilmembers in Eastland. To give newer members of council a little background on who we are, my name is Len Fisher.
And I am the managing director of Inspire Theater. Inspire Theater began as a fun adventure 17 years ago when a group of folks who had previously performed together decided that we should bring live theater to Westland. This creative endeavor was birthed out of the belief that community theater ought to be about community, building community actors to welcome the community and to serve the community. Seventeen incredible years later, Inspire Theater is stronger than ever and continues to bring quality entertainment to Westland and the surrounding communities of the western Wayne County. For more than six years, Inspire Theater has been located inside the Westland Center for the Arts, a city-owned building which formerly housed the WLND television station. After converting two studios into one auditorium, the theater seats 90 in comfortable cinema-style seating. The remainder of the building has been transformed into dressing rooms, a ticket and concessions area, a 40-seat studio performance space, and a scene shot. During the pandemic shutdown, an outdoor stage was erected for summer evening events. Prior to the present location in the Westland Center for the Arts, Inspire Theater rented space in various locations on Westland. Inspire typically stages four to six shows per year, which include two musicals and three comedies, as well as hosting musical lessons and classes. We just finished a successful run of the comedic farce See How They Run. Our final show of the season will be Guys and Dolls, the Musical, already in production. Inspire Theater, Season 18, begins with the murder mystery classic Clue in October. During our six successful seasons in our present location, we have invested over $80,000 in the city-owned property. We are outgrowing the building and looking to expand. With a desire to have greater curb appeal and a more functional and inviting public space, plans are in the works for an extended lobby and additional restrooms. A capital campaign is slated to kick off this summer, and the theater is looking to local and federal funding sources to assist the project. With the soft announcement of our plans, the community and our patrons have begun to respond generously. In the next few weeks, we will be holding a press event to officially kick off our capital campaign to raise the funds to complete the first phase of our project, the wraparound lobby, additional restrooms, and this will allow space to be used by our community as a whole for gathering events of all kinds. This addition will let the community and visitors to Westland know that Westland cares about the arts. We will be asking local businesses, residents, theater patrons, and the city council to invest in a city-owned property which houses, quote, "a hidden gem of Westland," unquote. As stated by the Project for Public Spaces, quote, "The sign of a great state or a great city is the strength of its cultural life. Our nonprofit art groups are a powerful economic force and act as a magnet for tourism. Even more important, they help educate and inspire our citizens and stimulate creativity in the workplace and in the schools. Let's us be the first of many investments in the arts and show everyone that the arts matter in Westland." Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Wild.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Len, for being here tonight. That's exciting. So, good luck to you. Council, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes or a couple of seconds to introduce to you the city of Westland's new chief diversity officer. Mr. Pascal Eze is with us here tonight. It's him sitting here in the second row. I'd say he was his first day in the job, and we're looking forward to bringing his talents to the city of Westland. If we could, would like to allow him to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm really glad and delighted to be part of the great team that is here at City Hall. I've had a wonderful first day of working. My colleagues are very, very friendly, very helpful, and I'm hopeful and enthusiastic about what lies ahead, what we can all achieve together here. I am accompanied here by friends and neighbors. Sometimes neighbors tend to act more like family. I have my neighbors here, Kate and Joel. They're here to be part of this, and I thank you so much for coming. I have someone I worked with many years ago, Chris Townsend. He's a resident of Westland, and he's here. Thank you so much. My friend Pastor Henry Sam is here, and I'm grateful that he could make it. Thank you so, so much. I'll be around in case you have questions for me. Thank you.
Well, Pascal, on behalf of the Westland City Council, welcome. We're happy to have you and happy to work with you on anything you need, and please reach out to us. Thank you. Okay, moving into some unhappy news, I'm afraid. It is with a heavy heart that I announced today that Henry Hank Johnson passed away early Sunday morning. I'm going to read a comment that I pulled off of social media, off of Facebook, and I modified it slightly, but the sentiment was there, and it was from a family member. Hank fought along, hard and courageous battle with cancer, and he can rest easy now. He was a staunch advocate for the developmentally disabled for ARC of Detroit. He was a proud and fierce community advocate and communicated regularly with members of the Westland City Council and the administration. He loved his community, the city of Westland and its residents. He served as a delegate for the 13th Congressional Democrats and former chair of the Norwaine Community Citizens Council. His accomplishments truly are too great to list here. An avid fan, an alumnus of both the University of Michigan and Wayne State University, quick-witted, dry humor, loyal, loving, loud and proud, a personality larger than life. His star will never dim but will continue to shine. He loved his Norwaine community and was a lifelong resident who fought for and succeeded in bringing much-needed services to its citizens. If you happen upon the Norwaine Community Center, please visit the Butterfly Garden and Expanded Library. The garden was planted in commemoration of Norwaine citizens and families who are no longer with us. While everyone has a unique and personal story of Hank, I personally, this is me, will always remember that he was a man of conviction, driven by duty, and ready to take action. He is a credit to himself, the historic Norwaine community, the city of Westland, and all of her residents. May we always strive to remember Hank by his actions and seek ourselves to find the courage to do the same. Hank, on behalf of the city council, thank you for all that you've done. You will be missed but never forgotten. For those who are interested, visitation and funeral arrangements for Hank will take place at Yoot Funeral Home on 35400 Glenwood here in Westland. Wednesday, we'll have visitation from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thursday, visitation will be from 1:00 till 8:00 p.m. Funeral will be on Friday at 12:00 noon. Interment will be at Glenwood Cemetery around 2:00 p.m. and luncheon here at City Hall around 3:00 o'clock. Now, here's where I like Hank. It is Henry's request that his funeral service be a maize out. And for those of you who don't know, that's wearing the color maize, yellow, from the University of Michigan. Go blue. Please, I ask all of you to join me in a moment of silence for our hero, Henry Hank Johnson. Well done. We'll now move to comments or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council protem to items that are specifically on the agenda today. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Reminder, this is for the agenda. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
Thank you, Council President, Emily Baumann. And I just had a couple of questions as I was reading through some of the things that may be nothing but just, on the new life insurance policy with Hartford, it mentions deviations. And being someone who's familiar with changes of life insurance policies or insurance policies with employees, I'm just curious what those deviations were and how they are affecting the employees of the city of Westland, because I don't know what they were currently getting compared to what possible deviations were. It wasn't specific at all. It's on page 35 of the council packet. Also, unless I'm doing my math wrong, on page five, the monthly premium is actually more than the, let's see, the monthly premium on page five is more than the annual premium referenced in the memo. And it could just be a math type of error kind of thing. And then the last one, it mentioned something about, in the very last page, it mentioned something about commissions to producers. Is that just a disclosure? I mean, I know it's not that you're paying commissions, it's obviously Hartford paying commissions, but I'm just trying to figure out how that related to the rest of the insurance policy. And those are my questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone else in the audience? All right, is there a motion? Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Sampie. Stephanie, do you have the ability to answer some of those questions regarding the life insurance policy?
Through the council president. The life insurance policy is exactly the same. Plan Moran reviewed it. It's exactly the same as what, there are no changes, same as what's in everybody's contracts. The collective bargaining agreements are, you know, have different levels of insurance coverage for life insurance, but the life insurance policy is identical to what it was. So, and the cost is the savings, and I'm not quite sure we're referencing in the memo. It's a $14,000, approximately $14,000 savings per year of, each year of the contract from Symetra.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held April 18, 2022. Approval of minutes of the budget study session held April 23, 2022. Request from Tim Sumter, Big Sky Fireworks, to operate a seasonal temporary fireworks tent in the Hunter Retail Center parking lot, 6561 Wayne Road, from June 28, 2022 through July 4, 2022, with the hours of operation 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. daily. Approval of renewal of existing financial management system with B.S.A. software. Term of the renewal shall be for one year in an amount not to exceed $97,919. Approval of the basic life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance carrier contract with the Hartford Group. This term shall be for a period of three years with an annual cost of $187,218. Approval of request to reprogram community development block grant funds. Adoption, as corrected, of ordinance 191B12 and ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Article 2, with adoption of Division 3, Section 2253 to 2263 of the Westland City Code to incorporate commercial anti-blite. Item was introduced April 18, 2022. Adoption of ordinance 203Q2 and ordinance to adopt Chapter 102, Article 5, Section 102 to 36 of the Westland City Code to incorporate post-construction stormwater controls. This item was also introduced April 18, 2022. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared resolution proclaiming May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 15 through May 21 as Police Week in the city of Westland. Moving to the next item, payment of voucher.
Some motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 1, public hearing for the proposed 2022-2023 budget. The public hearing date was set on March 7, 2022.
So this is a public hearing? This is the opportunity where anybody would like to speak on this item, and this item alone can do so? Same three-minute rules apply. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 2, nomination of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2025. Benny McGow, a current commissioner, has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Councilman McGow?
Yes, I'd like to place the name of Benny McGow in the nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
To close nominations.
Is there a motion to close nominations by Councilman Londo? Is there support? Support by Councilwoman Sampie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 3, appointment of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2025. Benny McGow has been nominated.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Mister McGow, please stand up, be recognized.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that support for reelection. I just want to say to the council and to Mayor Wild that my experience on the ZBA has been rewarding. I've been serving the ZBA for a few years now, and prior to that, I was a planning commissioner for the city of Westland for a number of years. So I certainly appreciate the opportunity to continue serving in the city, and more importantly, I appreciate the kind of recognition you give me as to the faith you have in what I can do and be of help to, any kind of service I can provide. So, again, would certainly like to appreciate this nomination for the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister McGow.
New business. Item 4, nomination of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire June 6, 2025. Current Commissioner Mary Vellordita has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Council President, I'd like to place the name of Mary Vellordita.
Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Some motion to close nominations by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 5, appointment of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire June 6, 2025. Mary Vellordita has been nominated.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mary, please stand up, be recognized. The floor is yours, Mary.
I didn't prepare a speech like Benny did, but I just wanted to say thank you. I think it's a privilege to serve as a commissioner for the city, and I'm honored to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. Item 6, approval of community development block grant annual action plan final statement and recommended projects, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and home ARPA substantial amendment 2021-2022.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilman McDermott. I'm going to go support by Councilwoman Sampie. Is there any discussion? Joanne, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? I apologize.
Thank you through the council president. Now, just thank you for the city council mayor's continued support of the community development programs.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 7, adoption of prepared resolution adopting the 2022-2023 Community Development Block Grant and Home Program budgets and 2021-2022 Home ARPA substantial amendment. Administration is authorized to execute the necessary contracts to implement the aforementioned programs with the Department of Housing and Urban Development and funded public service entities.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. You good to go, Joanne, or anything you want to add? Good to go? Very good. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We will now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaker, excuse me, their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right?
Hello, Emily Baumann, also with Westland. First, I'm excited about the police week next week. I think that's really exciting. I'm glad that you guys did that proclamation. I also want to make reference that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. My husband's a teacher, and unfortunately, his school was a little light on the appreciation for the whole week, but my kid's school is really doing a great job. So I just want to encourage everybody to appreciate teachers this week because they do a really good job, and I know it's been hard these last couple of years for them to do this, and I know that we've had some virtual teacher appreciation with our school. I don't know how other schools have done it, but this year, we get to all do it really face-to-face and make sure we appreciate them well. With that, I just, I always want to say thank you. I've enjoyed being part, coming to these meetings and, you know, watching you guys work in this well, and still learning some of the processes of the city as well. And I just, I wanted to kind of make an announcement that I have decided to step in to run for another office, and that is for state senate, which, which Westland is included. The redistricting, just so everyone knows how that's going, is redistricting will be city of Westland, city of Inkster, Garden City, Canton, and part of Livonia will all be in the same district. So I just wanted to let people know that they can call me at 248-509-4744 and give me any, ask any questions. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone on my left? Sir? Yeah.
My name is Dennis Urbansky, and I live at 1132 Woodborne. I moved there when I was four years old in 1961, and now I'm 65 and I want to retire in this property. And I'm here for guidance on who I can help, who can help me. What I had occur was my neighbor has a big tree, and a big root grew under the fence into my foundation of my detached garage. fence into my foundation of my detached garage, and it cracked. There's big cracks. And also, his tree fell on it, on my garage, and they're gonna, my insurance is going to replace the garage. It's twelve thousand seven hundred, but the cement, I had no way of knowing that a branch was going to grow underground, and it's, I'm looking at like eight thousand dollars that the insurance won't cover. I've had the building inspector and the ordinance inspector out there, and I just don't know what, I don't know how to turn, who, if you could point me into the right person. I had, I talked to Joe Sparza. I, I'm just not getting anywhere, and I, I don't know what, what else to do. My wife passed away from COVID from twenty-eight years just before the shots, and I'm really trying hard to get this, and I don't feel I should be responsible for a neighbor neglecting his tree going. I don't know who to go to. Only one time in the, since I lived here, we had to go to the city for help, and it was Mayor McKinney, and he was way back there. But if someone could please just point me in the right direction and answer some, a few questions.
So what, what mayor did you want to talk or? Let me get to the audio screen.
Through the chair. Good evening, sir. If you stick around to the end of the meeting, perhaps myself and the city attorney, we can, we can talk, we can learn a little bit more about the situation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank all of yous.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anyone on my right? I was waiting for you, Ray. I was waiting for you to raise your hand.
Of course, I got it.
I held it there for a minute for you. I knew.
Yeah, I missed the last one, but I watched it on television. And Go Ray is always on the go, and, but Judy, Memorial Service is coming up, and I believe it's May fourteenth from one to three, and I'm planning on being there. Looking forward to it, and I do have the address of the churches over here in Westland. I will send it over to Mayor's office, too, and the cable, Craig, and some other people. So, by the way, we don't want to forget, too, I've been at this for twenty-seven years advocating, and things are getting better. So let's remember mental health. You know, a lot of times people shove it underneath the rug, but we need to keep it out of the rug. We need to be kind to one another, too. It doesn't matter who we are, and I am definitely looking forward to doing a presentation for the fire department for three days. So to talk about my life, how mental health has helped me, and resources, so, and this is Police Week, right? I just heard that out here from somebody. I do support police officers, and I think, you know, they save lives out there, and they should be recognized. Matter of fact, teachers in schools, too. So I'm sorry you hear about Hank, what happened to him. It's real sad. But our life goes on, and he knows that we all want to, we need to continue with our jobs and continue what, basically what I'm doing, too. You know, continue what, you know, doing like everything else. I'm for people with disabilities, and, and I'll never stop. I'm going to keep going till things get better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Dan?
Good evening, Council, Mayor Wild. Dan Statchell, three, three, nine, five, two, Fountain Boulevard. I just want to take the opportunity to make everyone aware that we're having a Memorial Day parade. It's going to be held on Sunday, the twenty-ninth of May. Applications are available on the city's website. We're only three weeks away. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town for two weeks because of a vacation, but anybody that hasn't filled out an application, wants to partake in a parade, get on the city's website, fill out the paperwork, and we'll have you in. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right?
Blessings, everyone. I don't have much to say. I just wanted to say, since Sunday is Mother's Day, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, all through Westland, all through the country. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor Wild. My name is John Good. I live in Heather Ridge Apartments on Newburgh, just close by here. I wasn't sure if I was going to speak tonight, but I did want to, I guess, make a comment about the city. I moved here in June twenty twenty, from the city of Detroit, where I had been living, during the middle of a very strange period, as you all know. I wanted more space. I wanted, you know, my own place, and I, and I really found that in Westland. I found a real community here, and I just wanted to kind of commend what, what is going on in the city of Westland. I really enjoy, enjoyed, what's the, the Blues Brews and barbecue event, and some of the other community events that I really didn't know about before moving here. So I just wanted to commend the work that you're doing, and as I think about, you know, where I live in Metro Detroit, given this crazy housing market, I continue to look here, up in Oakland County, back in the city, and I continue to look at the future of Westland Mall, because I think it's a really key indicator of where Westland is headed. I think there are a lot of, a lot of potential going on. There's a lot of potential for that site. I guess I, I recommend that you look at what the city of Sterling Heights is doing with Lakeside, a big kind of reimagining of that site, and I think it, it is, it could be a huge community asset if, if a, a long-term planning process is, is continued, and I really think that Westland has a, has a bright future ahead of it and could be the core of a western suburban retailing community center. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
I'm going to tell you why I sound like this in just a minute. I had a great weekend. I went over to the historic village and I helped clean. That's why I sound like this, because the buildings were hot as HE double hockey sticks, and when you walked out into the cold, it was like icebergs. But I had a wonderful time. We had, there was a group of kids, young people, not kids, that came, and they helped clean, too. We cleaned the farmhouse, and then there was a group that cleaned Eloise, and then there was a group that cleaned the octagon house. But as you're riding down Wayne Road, look towards the bell, and you'll see a new free library there that Mr. Warren made and Mr. Warren installed. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Okay. Good evening, Council and Mayor Wild. I just wanted to address, I'm probably a little bit late on the park and all the, that's going to be going on, on the park, which is across the street from where I live, and I've just been concerned for some time now about Ann Carlson with, with the new park there and the pavilions being rented that people stop and park right on Carlson and unload and load. And I've talked to Mayor Wild and some different people that he's, you know, had me speak with about the issue, and he did add a sign, which doesn't affect anybody. Nobody even sees it. And so I just didn't know if it's too late or if there is some way. Mayor addressed all of us that lived across the street in the beginning, which was really nice of him, just to give us a heads up and try to see if there were any issues, and I didn't know if there's anything like that still, or if there's anything that's in the plans about parking for people for unloading and loading. I thought maybe a fence would be nice, and it would distract people from doing that, or possibly where the police drive up and down, there's some grass there or whatever that possibly that could be used, but I hate to keep calling the police because they're very busy and they have other issues other than being a parking place, and there are some other issues going on, and I did get a chance to speak to the, I don't know his title for sure, the director of the Parks and Rec, because like the area that's getting redone, where the spray park is, it's been open for two weeks, and I did call and leave a message on a voicemail to somebody on a Friday, but I guess he said he didn't get it, and kids go in there and play, and at night, teenagers, I've seen them, I mean, I have upstairs and a window open where I hear them all hours of the night playing out there in the dark, and I thought maybe a light that would come on and maybe the police would have a camera to notice the kids out there. They're also playing with skateboards going down the slides, so a lot of the equipment that's already been put in previously has been damaged, and those are some of the reasons why, possibly, so that it doesn't happen in the future. So that's mainly what I just wanted to try to address. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Is there anyone else in the audience? All right. Seeing none, we'll close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I'll start off with the last one. Thank you, ma'am, for coming tonight, and we do have a problem there, and you guys have seen it. There was a parking lot alongside Carlson, and when we redid the park, one of the issues was, was the parking in Carlson, and the residents who worked with them, they wanted to get rid of the parking there, and we did, so we took the park almost all the way up to the curb. Looking back, we probably should have put like a slip street in there, so like, like we have a little bit further down at the farmer's market where you can pull in and unload, because what we have is, that's where the pavilions are, and then if you park either at the far end or if you park across the park, you got a lot of, a lot of room to cover to unload. So I'll, I'll talk with Deputy Chief Dolly about, about enforcing that a little bit tighter, but we probably need to take a look and see what else we can do before we redevelop the rest of that property as far as additional parking and how to handle unloading there. So will you give me your number again before you leave tonight, so we can kind of, with, with the investment in the Play Planet area, that's going to start dismantling that in the fall with installation in the spring, and it's probably going to be even more popular than it is now, so we have to get in front of it. But we still own land all the way around that, so now's the time for us to come up with a better solution. So Council, we'll definitely be looking for your input on that, and the DDA's been a great partner on all those investments, so I think we can do something there. So please give me your number again before you leave. Council, thank you for the warm welcome for Pascal Lee, the city's chief diversity officer. Thank you for taking a few moments tonight to recognize longtime Westland resident Hank Johnson, and it's going to be a pretty emotional week this, this week as we say goodbye to our friend. Council, I only have two things I was going to touch on tonight, so we can keep things quick. Number one is, this week, we were planning on launching our second annual Operation Clean Sweep, and we're going to continue to do that dodging the weather that gets thrown at us throughout this week, but this is a partnership between the city of Westland's Department of Public Service, the Eighteenth District Court's Work Program, and the Department of Neighborhood Services, and they'll be out, you'll see the folks out cleaning up trash along the corridor, the corridors, the big thoroughfares throughout the city. We divided the city up into five sections, and we'll be cleaning up trash, and we'll be encouraging our residents to utilize the warm weather in this cleanup effort in their own neighborhoods as well, so we expect to get a lot of, a lot of cleaning done over the next couple of weeks. And then, Council, I'm going to end tonight with, with an update on the recycling project that we announced on Earth Day. So today was the day that, that they were out actually starting to audit the recycling containers, and so obviously, today was Monday, Bee Week, and at four o'clock today, and they started today, there's about thirty-one hundred carts on Monday, Bee Week, and at about four o'clock today, they had inspected over twenty-five hundred of them. Kyle reports the good news is that the contamination rate was about twenty-two percent, so about twenty-two percent of the people that are on the route today are going to get little notes attached to their container, kind of encouraging them to change a few behaviors. But one of the things that I thought was, was good about that was, it looked like overwhelmingly the two issues that, that we're facing, at least in this small sample, were plastic bags and recyclables that are inside bags. So I think if we continue to see that play throughout the city, it'll definitely make our, our efforts a little bit easier trying to identify the recycling thing, and that's not unusual, because it wasn't that long ago, we, we could recycle bags and put things in bags, so I'll keep you updated as we go, and it, from what Kyle was saying, it didn't appear to be any negative interactions with residents. I know there was a little misinformation out there that we were going through people's trash, and that is absolutely not true. They are looking inside the blue recycling containers, and if you want to participate in that program, you have to do it the right way. So we'll continue to keep you updated as we go, but for first, the first day, the first swing at it, I think it was a pretty good, pretty good first day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. We'll begin council comments with Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening, everybody. First off, I want to start my comments out by congratulating our new additions to the Westland Fire Department and also to those fire service officers who got promoted. That includes Jeremy Wright, Scott Busek, Dave Polite, Camden Ramirez, Aaron Takarsky, and then our K-9 Bella. So congratulations to our two new firefighters who got hired on board here and those who got promoted. You know, many of you may have seen Mitch, who is our president of the union here, for our professional firefighters, so maybe one day we'll be talking to his son and negotiating contracts with Aaron, but congratulations to all of our firefighters. Wanted to make mention, we talked about this last week with the first tranche of ARPA funds that were spent. We're going to be having some conversations about the second tranche of ARPA funds and, you know, kind of where we want to go with that, and just coming off of Earth Week and the exciting announcement that the mayor just shared, I would just like to opine for a moment and give my personal thoughts that we can do more on the environment, we can do more to protect the environment here locally in Westland and combat climate change, and I think one of the big pieces that we can do with those ARPA funds is renewable energy. Solar energy, wind, geothermal present us with a big opportunity, not only as potentially a cost savings for how we power our buildings here in the city of Westland, but to really reduce our carbon footprint and combat man-made climate change. It's one of the most, excuse me, it's one of the serious issues that we face here in the city, across our state and across the country, and with this one-time money, we can really do something big and impactful to leave a bigger, greener footprint here, so I'm excited to work with all of my colleagues and work with the administration and all of you here in the community as we work through that second tranche of ARPA funds to hopefully do some more on sustainability and renewable energy. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I have several teachers in my family. My Aunt Mary Lou is, was a recently retired public school teacher. My cousin was a public school teacher for Ann Arbor hereon for the River Rats, and my cousin Julie is a teacher in Detroit, so I just want to thank those in my family and all across Wayne Westline who are public school teachers. Thank you for all you do. We know that now more than ever, teaching through COVID, teaching through virtual learning, and teaching in the face of, you know, some parents that just unfortunately don't always display respect for what our teachers go through. It's tough, so thank you for enlightening our young minds in all that you do. All of our public school, private school teachers, thank you for each and every one of you for what you do for our kids every day. Thanks to Ray for bringing up the fact that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. It is, you know, really, we should be working with the disabled community, the differently abled and mental health community every single abled and mental health community every single day. But May is a time that we can really reflect on what we're doing, and what we can continue to do and do more of, to work with people who are differently abled, and work with those who have a, a mental illness and a brain health issue. So thank you, Ray, as always, for your advocacy, and for bringing that to the attention that May is indeed Mental Health Awareness Month. Congratulations to Benny McGow and Mary Valerida on your reappointments to the ZBA. Thank you to everybody who serves on a board and commission here in the city of Westland. We really appreciate all you do. Thank you to Joanne Campbell and her team, as always, for their dedication on the CDBG work in running Jefferson Barnes. We really appreciate oftentimes unseen, but you know, thankless work. But thank you to not just Joanne, but your entire team for all that you do year-round at Jefferson Barnes and, and beyond, for our residents in Norwaine. And that leads me into, you know, mentioning Norwaine, a friend of all of ours that we, that we lost, and that's Hank Johnson. And, you know, many of us knew Hank, some of us up here knew Hank for 25, 30 years or longer. And it was mentioned that, you know, Hank was a dedicated resident to the Norwaine community. And I don't think anybody in, in Westland loved Norwaine more than Hank. You know, his advocacy for the people in that community and the people all across Westland is, was second to none. Hank was a dedicated Norwaine resident himself, a lifelong resident of the community. He was a dedicated Democrat, and used to be at every single Westland Democratic Club meeting that we would have there in Norwaine. He was a huge advocate for the disabled community, the mental health community. But one thing that wasn't mentioned, too, was, was Hank's advocacy for the LGBTQIA community, and for people who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender. And, you know, we here in Westland last year adopted a, you know, Pride Resolution, and that was something that I know for many years, whether it was a human rights ordinance or adopting Pride Month, Hank pushed us to, to, to be better, to be more equitable, to be more diverse, and to be more accepting and tolerant of, of all people. And his advocacy for LGBTQIA individuals here in the city and beyond is really going to be missed. Hank was a tireless advocate for so many causes, and that was one of the many that, that he was an advocate for. And we're really going to miss Hank. I'm personally going to miss him. I know that Hank was someone that I had many spirited political discussions with. Sometimes we agreed, and sometimes we fiercely disagreed. Even if we were both Democrats, sometimes we were on the opposite side of the spectrum. But really, we're, we're going to, we're going to miss Hank. And it's a, it's a big loss for our community. And I just want to, you know, thank his family for sharing Hank with us for all these years. And thank, you know, Henry Johnson for all the incredible tireless work that he did for, for all of us here in the community, and for, for Norwaine, and, and well beyond. So thank you, Hank. You will be missed. And also wanted to wrap up my comments by saying, thank you to Mr. Eze, to Pascal, for joining us here. Look forward to talking to you about many issues related to DEI, but certainly in a community where we're 20% African-American, 4% Arab-American, Latino, and Latinx, we have a lot of work to do to diversifying our workforce and making sure that it is really truly reflexive of the community that we serve. And really making sure that our workforce, you know, again, is, is more like the community that Westland reflects. So I look forward to working with you here in the years to come on what we can do to really, you know, meet the goal of diversity and build a workforce that looks like the community that we serve. So with that, Godspeed to Henry Johnson, and hope you all treat each other with kindness and respect, and treat each other with the way Hank would want people to be treated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hirsberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll start by congratulating Benny and Mary on your appointments. Thank you for your continued service. And also a warm welcome to our new DEI Director. Best of luck to you, and I look forward to meeting and talking with you, hopefully later this week or next week. I want to give a quick reminder that the Coffee Hour for State Rep Coleman and Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson will be this coming Monday, the 9th, at 9:00 a.m. at the library. That starts at 9:00 a.m., the library. My condolences to the Johnson family, rest in peace, Hank. I didn't get to know him too well, but from what I knew, he had great respect for everybody that he met, and was very, very welcoming. And I just wanted to give a plug for the, Judy McKinney also passed away a few weeks ago. Her service will be May 14th at 1:00 p.m. at the Grace Moravian Church, and that's on Hyvely Street in Westland. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to share my condolences to the family and friends of Hank Johnson. There are certain people that you just kind of meet like once, and you just know like they're a good spirited person. I know he, he was very active in the Norwaine area. And again, we didn't know each other really well, but I just continued to kind of witness from kind of behind, and just, I had so much respect for his passion and dedication for Wesleyan. I know he'll be deeply missed, and his legacy will continue on for years. So with that said, welcome to May. I know it's been touched upon, May being National Mental Health Awareness Month. Personally, my family deals with it. My husband has bipolar disorder. I deal with anxiety, situational anxiety, my son does, too. So I'm a huge advocate of mental health. I think it's always important to just speak on it. Check in on your loved ones this month. You never know what someone's dealing with. And, you know, my hope is that we'll continue to have access here in the city for ample mental health services that is desperately needed. I know that there's going to be a virtual symposium on mental health and suicide prevention, so I wanted to plug that, because I think it's very important. Wesleyan Schools is going to be hosting this on Tuesday, May 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. I did share this on my personal Facebook page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. But again, I, I would encourage those to attend, just to get additional information, always breaking the stigma on mental health. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, because my mom's been a special needs paraprofessional for 30 years. So I definitely wanted to just thank those teachers that are always tirelessly working for our community. We, we have a, kind of a split community, so we have residents that go to Wayne Wesleyan Schools, Livonia, Romulus, and Taylor. So I just want to thank those teachers that work in those districts specifically, that service our, our residents and those students. You know, especially as a mom, seeing those teachers being creative and showing the dedication to the students during COVID, during the pandemic. I witnessed it working from home, and those teachers came up with some very creative ways to teach our students. So I just have so much respect for those teachers. So I wanted to say thank you for all that you've done, and Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Just a few congratulations as well. I know there's been very, many of us have said this, but congratulations to Benny and to Mary, no she left. And Mr. Eze, we've talked via Facebook, but congratulations and welcome. I definitely think that you fill a huge void, and I'm very excited to work with you. So thank you so much for accepting this position, and welcome. And then I also wanted to just kind of state that the, I don't, no, we haven't talked about this. On Wednesday, May 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00, the Westland Rotary Club, the Norwaine Citizens' Council, and the city of Westland will be hosting a family jamboree. I wanted to plug this, because I really, really, really hope that I can stop by. It looks like a fabulous event. I think everyone should come out there. It is free, they have food and music, entertainment, games. It looks like a lot of great community resources, too. And that will be hosted at Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. So I invite the community to come out. I know they're very welcoming of just having everyone come. It, it looks like a great event. And lastly, I wanted to wrap up. Officer Margie Kelly, I know she was here, but from the Westland Police Department, I wanted to wish her good luck. She's participating in a police unity tour ride to DC. And she begins her ride next week. So it's a gathering that's going to conclude for an annual candlelight vigil in honor and remembrance of our fallen heroes. So I wanted to publicly thank Officer Kelly for representing our city. I know that all the police department, city council, city administration is behind her. I just wanted to thank her for continued commitment to the city. And thank you again, Officer Kelly, if you, if you watch us back, we really are very appreciative for everything you do. So to wrap up, I want to say Happy Mother's Day, Councilwoman Rakowski. Thank you for, you know, us moms, we, we stick together. To my mom, Debbie Hunt, who hopefully watches us back, as she always does. My mother-in-law, Linda Sampe, and all the moms in Westland. Happy Mother's Day, and be kind and safe, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Happy Mother's Day to you as well. Thank you. It is Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, our, our teachers are so dedicated to our young people, and they've just been faced with every kind of trial and tribulation we could throw at them. So I thought maybe one thing that we can do as, as humans, instead of just grabbing a gift card, or they're, you know, going to Starbucks, one of the best things you can do for your teachers is to advocate for them. And the second thing you can do is just write a letter to their administration. If you admire what they're doing with your students, and how they're changing these young people's lives, a, a very simple letter to their principal about the impact that they're making is, is worth a thousand gift cards to Starbucks. So that's just an easy, free way of recognizing the teachers that are making a difference in your life. I'm sure they'd appreciate the gift card, too, though. Happy Police Week upcoming. And thank you to the city for recognizing Peace Officers Memorial Day. The day is very special to me, as my family had suffered the loss of my cousin Scott, who was a Chelsea Police Chief, who passed away when his, they were in pursuit and the helicopter crashed. So that's a day that's important to me and my family. And our, our hearts go out collectively to all of the, we use peace, and I think that's a good word for, instead of police, but all of the officers' families that have met an untimely end of their career and their lives with their loved ones. It doesn't get any easier. But it's nice to know that, as a community, we'll embrace those people and recognize them. I'd like to congratulate and thank Mr. McGow and Mrs. Valer, Valerida, or Mary, as we all call her. Thank you for your continued work on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Hart considers it to be one of the most unthankful positions, but it, it really speaks volumes of your character, that you want to continue to be such an active part of our community. And, you know, service to our community, in my opinion, is the, the best work of life. And I, I thank you for that. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome our newly hired firefighters, Mr. Camden Ramirez and Aaron Takarsky. I had a little emotional moment there, watching a dad swear in his son. That was a flash forward, perhaps into my future. So that's very sweet, that we have legacy, a legacy built in our departments, where fathers and sons are following the same dreams. I'd like to congratulate Captain Wright, Captain Busek, Sergeant Polite, and of course, the newest Battalion Chief Bella, the only four-legged Battalion Chief in our fire department. Thank you for everything that you do. And welcome, DEI Director Eze. You're going to fill a significant hole in our administration, and I look forward to everything that you can contribute. It's a long time coming, and thank goodness we're here, and we have someone at the helm to take care of that role, and, and bring the diversity, equity, and inclusion that's so necessary today, and that all of our residents can see and, and be a part of, and feel that they're recognized in our city. So good luck. We stand behind you, and we look forward to what you can bring to our community. And lastly, you know, I'll share the sentiments of so many of my colleagues and, and our friends in the city with the passing of Mr. Johnson. And I would just want to express my sadness at his loss, but the happiness in knowing him as a human being, and the example for advocacy that he has set for so many in our city, especially in our Norwaine district. And I hope that the light of peace surrounds him, his family, and his friends as they navigate through their grief, but knowing that the impression that he's left, the large, large footprints that he's left in our community, that will be struggled, there will be a struggle to fill them. But he laid those down so that other people can pick up the work, and he will be sorely missed. So with that, again, to mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day. For those women who are a mother figure, Happy Mother's Day. And for those who have not yet achieved that, I see you, I recognize you, and I know that it's a very difficult day, and so Happy Sunday. And we will see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilwoman McGow.
Thanks. Like all my colleagues, I'd like to thank Benny and Mary for continuing to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. They both do a great job, not only on the, the ZBA, but they're also active in, in many other ways throughout the city. So again, thank you for continuing to serve in that capacity. I'd like to welcome Pascal on his, in, on his appointment as our DEI Director. I'm confident you'll do a great job for the city. And if I could be of any assistance, please feel free to reach out. I, too, would like to extend my condolences to the family and, and friends of Hank Johnson. And, you know, one way to, to honor Hank's memory is to keep his advocacy alive, and to keep his passion for the Norwaine area, the historic Norwaine area in our city alive. So I'm, I'm sure that Joanne will reach out to us with many opportunities in the future to continue that legacy that Hank was so passionate about. Dan Statchell mentioned the Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, May 29th. It starts off at John Glenn at 1:00 on that Sunday afternoon. So please come out and, and join us for, for that event. It will go from John Glenn up Carlson, Central City Parkway, into the library. So please join us for, for that event on May 29th. And I, too, would like to wish all the mothers, grandmothers, and mother figures a, a very happy Mother's Day on Sunday. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Pro Tim Londo.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to say a lot of the same things that have already been said. Congratulations to Benny McGow and to Mary Valerida for your reappointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Both do a great job on that board, and Benny's a heck of a golfer. So if you ever see Benny out there, heck of a golfer, and one of our top patrons at the Westland, at the Mac Mayfield Municipal Golf Course, excuse me. Also, congratulations to the firefighters that were sworn in. Thank you to Chief Morris for putting that event on. I really, really like those events. I appreciate you for putting that together. So congratulations to our two new firefighters, Camden Ramirez and Aaron Takarsky, and to for the, to Jeremy Wright for his promotion to captain, Scott Busek for his promotion to captain, and David Polite for his promotion to sergeant. And we all talked about it. Bella was our arson dog. She was promoted to Battalion Chief, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. Somehow, the city clerk was able to get Bella to sit and raise her right paw. I don't know what you had, you might have had a treat or two, but you'll have to watch it back on WLND. Congratulations to Pascal Eze for our new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director. I spoke about the last meeting. I really look forward to working with you. You've got a great background. You bring a really diverse skill set for everything, not just DEI, but housing and a lot of other things. So we're looking forward to, to having you on the team here. And thank you to his friends and family that came out tonight. I know it means a lot to him. Also, real quick, briefly, our city clerk, I hope you don't mind me mentioning this, the clerk's office received a call this morning from the Wayne Westland School District that three school buildings will be unavailable to use during the August 22, 2022 election. That's going to be Schweitzer, Hamilton, and Edison, which is going to affect eight precincts. So I know the city clerk's office is coming up with a game plan and how to get that message out to folks, but I wanted to mention it tonight publicly. City clerk's office will be sending out communication and using all of our communication channels to, to get that word out. So once again, if you vote at Schweitzer, Hamilton, or Edison, your precincts are going to be affected for the August primary election. Our budget meetings are completed. We had two great meetings. I want to thank the mayor and his staff, along with my colleagues, for their professionalism. We had two long days, but I think we, we got a lot accomplished in those meetings. And we're going to pass a three-year balanced budget, which is not, it's, what's the word I'm looking for here? It's not very common, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a big thing for us. It's a big deal. So residents, I think, are going to be proud, and we've got a lot of good things coming up. Last couple of things, I want to thank the Council President for his moment of silence and reading a wonderful tribute, and all my colleagues for saying and reading a wonderful tribute, and all my colleagues for saying a lot of great things. You know, I'm kind of at a loss for words on what to say about Hank. Uh, you know, he meant a lot to me. He would call me all the time, text me all the time with a lot of things and, you know, that was one of those phone calls you always look forward to. You always look forward to talking with Hank. He's one that can out-talk me, which is very, very, uh, there's not a lot of people that can out-talk me, but Hank was one of them. And, um, you know, we had a lot of things in common, you know, our love for the city, our love for Michigan football, Michigan sports, among other things. We both served on the Norwaine Community Citizens Council as well. So I know I'll work with Joanne and the Citizens Council to continue his legacy and continue to do good things. I know, I know he had to be very, very proud to find out that they're going to get the, one of the largest playscapes in America over at Lincoln Johnson Fields. I know he was happy about that. So that'll be a way to really, uh, pat his legacy as well. And then last but not least, happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in the audience and all the mothers, mothers at home tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Start off my comments and like he says, I'm always one that goes last, so I always have to repeat everything. So, but, uh, I'll summarize. Uh, congratulations to the new, uh, hires for the fire department as well, the promotions. Well deserved. Uh, well deserved for Polite, I'll call him later on too. I owe him a debt of gratitude. We all know what that was. So, uh, our firefighters are fantastic. So they have responded to my home at one time to help me, so I appreciate everything they do. And poor Dave Polite had to pick me up off the floor, so he deserved it. Um, Pascal, Mr. Eze, welcome. As we all said before, we're really thrilled to have you here. Uh, again, there's a role that, that's there and, and you're the perfect fit for it. So really excited. Again, you have, uh, our, this council at your, uh, at your use. If you need anything, we're happy to help you and we're excited. So happy to have you. Benny, you're here and Mary, she had to go, she probably had some more outstanding community work to do, but congratulations and thank you for volunteering to serve again on the ZBA and thank you for my colleagues for, uh, supporting them unanimously. When I, uh, I guess as my colleague had mentioned, it's one of the thankless jobs, but it's also underappreciated. The ZBA, what, which is unique, is the council delegates all of their decision authority to the ZBA. The ZBA is the last stop. When you, anything for Zoning Board of Appeals, that doesn't come to us anymore. We've delegated our entire authority, so they have a lot of responsibility on their shoulders and it takes sharp guys like Benny and sharp women like Mary to make sure that that's happening. So thank you for all the work you do. It's really good work. We appreciate it. Um, the mall, so, uh, you know, I, I think every now and then we hear about the mall. Uh, you brought it up, so I, I'll always find a chance to respond. I think there's nobody in this room that I have not talked to ten times about the mall. I, I can't walk past our economic developers' office and go, "Hey, so what's up with the mall?" It's an ongoing conversation. It's the number one thing we talk about. It's really important to understand with the mall, it's privately owned. The City of Westland does not own that mall. And, uh, you know, I, I think the owners have their vision and we're hoping that they're going to have our vision and our vision's really close, pretty much exactly what everybody else's vision is, because we're seeing what's happening across the state and other malls, right? We're seeing that. We're just trying to make sure they know that we're seeing that and it's an opportunity. But the end of the day, it's got to be their decision, but I know Economic Development Director, Mayor, and Administration is not giving them any free time and continuing to communicate them on a regular, regular basis. So I assure you, it is on the forefront of all of our minds. We are not, not thinking about it. Again, I think it's the number one thing we ever talk about for economic development. So the number one, by far. So I assure you. So I, uh, also, uh, happy Mother's Day again, as everyone else has said. I have to make sure, Linda, happy Mother's Day. Uh, thank you for dealing with my children and me all at the same time. You know, your oldest child, me, so she's got her hands full. And, uh, last but not least, which my colleague just reminded me, but I already had it written here, today's my son's fifteenth birthday, so happy birthday, Michael. And I know you're going to be embarrassed when you see this and you probably won't, but if you do, I hope some of your friends saw it and they're going to tell you, "Dad[1786.91]